I've got a little more commissioner, but I'm gonna go ahead and get a couple of things on past us. We're gonna have an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. So if I could ask everyone to stand with me and we'll begin. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for a chance to gather today to take care of county business with the help of FEMA. We are grateful for their support and their presence here. We ask your blessings upon our meeting and upon our cleanup efforts. We just pray that you would preside over this meeting. We thank you again for your love for us. We praise you in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Y'all can go ahead and have a seat. We're gonna take care of a couple of items that I added to this agenda item. Item number one is public comments and/or requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042. And I've got one request to speak by Steve Austin.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. Originally it was scheduled to be on next week's program, but I wanted to take the opportunity to take advantage of this small meeting to put forward the commissioners so they'll have time for consideration and review and hopefully when we address the issue. And next Monday's meeting will be a little bit cold running. But what I propose is the adoption of the county flag. Have one designed here for demonstration purposes. And I'll put it on display in the lobby in the bill case at the conclusion of this meeting. So it'll be there for review, not only by commissioners, but the county citizens as well. Purpose of the flag is to raise funds. They can be utilized by Texas by the Tidus County Historical Commission. Funds received from sale of the flag would go to pay for the costs in the reuse for purposes of Tidus County Historical Commission. Everything from the fees and markers to additional payments on the purchased bombers and more. All of that ticket is covered by the Tidus County Historical Commission. On the handout, I have a proposal. I'll give you an idea of what the flag looks like in the design concept. Some reference flags are also noted where the origin came from. And it's the deal of the county and identity. You're one of the counties, about half the counties in the state of Texas. Do not have listed a flag that recognizes the community. And I wanted to make sure the Tidus County is in the group that does, not only for identification purposes, but education and tourism as well. A brief update of the flag. The background is blue. Of course, I've highlighted the purposes for that to involve any integrity. 1846, of course, is the founding date of the county. The Red River, County of Southern Florida, and Tidus County contains one of those entities. Lone Star, of course, reflects the national, of the, of the national, the state's logo. And the fact that it's named Tidus County, Andrew Jackson Titus was an individual who was credited with a number of things. One of them is the St. George Road, which is an appropriate category for the commissioners to preserve. And in keeping with the star, I'd like to point out that the approximate location of the star within the county silhouette would be Mount Pleasant. And the intersection of the facets would be the approximate location of the courthouse in reference to Mount Pleasant. The port Sherman is indicated as one of the original security measures taken by settlers and home centers in this area and region. And also denotes the activity between creeks, such as Sofa River and Cypress. The heritage of Tidus County is recorded on the marker, which reflects the flag itself. The points of the star, the top point in the lower left, symbolic of a north-south route, could be relevant to Highway 71. The bottom right, 49, is of course the route established by Andrew Jackson Titus in going to the port at Jefferson, one of the original roads in this area. And the rivaling of the star points indicate either 67 or High 30 or possibly Bankhead Highway. So there's a range of all facets of the, of the flag. Now, however, the prototype component will be downstairs.
Steve, keep in mind, since this is public comment time, you've got about one minute left.
Sir, I just wanted to get a three-point delay to come back.
And where are you gonna display that?
It'll be downstairs in the bill display case.
Okay.
After the commissioner's court meeting, I'll come back and get it taken downstairs. So it's gonna be there for review. And of course, the commissioners take the balance of the week to address any questions that they may have. And I'll be soliciting input from the community as well. I will be ready to go with the production at the conclusion of next Monday's commissioner's court meeting. Get your office, manage the adoption of the county flag. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Looks good. All right. I'm considering on bumping item number two till the end so that we could go ahead and proceed. Sanitation solutions. Did you want to say anything at this time?
Yes, I did.
Well, if I bump you till the end, you're gonna be sitting here through a meeting. If you want to speak to this right now, I'll allow you a second to speak.
Either way, I'm not interested in the length of the meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm gonna, I'm going to skip over item number three, and we'll come back to that at the very end, since that's just local business here. Item number four is a kickoff meeting with Federal Emergency Management Administration to discuss road damage and debris removal. So we're very honored to have everyone here today. We appreciate the time you've taken and the miles you've traveled to be here to assist Titus County. Let me begin with some introductions. I'd like the commissioners to introduce themselves to you, and then let's just go down the rows, and you all tell us who you are and where you're from, please. Jimmy, if you'll start down there on that end.
I'm Jimmy Parker, Commissioner, Precinct Four.
I'm Carolyn Moore, Assistant District Attorney.
And I'm Brian Lee. I'm the Titus County Judge.
I'm Mike Fields. I'm Commissioner, Precinct Two.
I'm Valerie, Commissioner, Precinct One.
Okay, gentlemen, go ahead and start in there first row.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm with the Department of Homeland and Homeland Insurance and Specials. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Fredrick Johnson, FEMA, Department of Environmental Protection.
I'm Richard Barbour, FEMA, Department of National Security.
I'm Robert Del, Department of Development.
Thanks, Valerie. Tom?
I'm Todd Leeson, Department of FEMA, VA, Gruley.
I'm John Chail, Defense Bureau, Department of Public Health and Specials.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Amy Short. I work for Saniano from Dallas, Texas, and I am your state representative.
Welcome back, Amy. Tom, who's gonna begin?
Either.
Who would like to begin?
I will.
All right. Come on up, or we can provide you with a chair up here and a microphone, whatever's easiest for you.
I understand.
And we don't mean to have this so formal that we've gotta stand up here, but just to get a good recording of everybody, we'll stay up here, and we could easily gather down there, but the sound is not as good.
Now, let me say, I'm Todd Leeson, Department of Assistant Gruley, for the, for the Tidus County during this recovery process. This is just an agenda that basically requires that be going over with everybody. The incident period was December 26th through January 21st. That fraction day, of course, was February 9th, 2016, due to severe storms. Gone ahead of straight line winds and flooding. Off share for additional damages is 75 FEMA, 25. We have a minimum small project for a project even to be hosted, be written, has to be over $3,050. That doesn't even have to gather if we can, where we can make it. It's supposed to have to be over $3,000.
And as you had explained, as explained to us, if we had a mile of road that had various points on there that were damaged, just because it's 100 yards or 200 yards in between damage, doesn't mean that each one of those damage points has to be that $3,050. That's encompassed in a larger scope.
The bottom, the final amount of the project worksheet has to be $3,050.
Okay.
Not the size or the locations or the type of area. That runs, the small projects run all the way up to 121,800. Anything over 121,800 are considered larger projects. These, the state of the county outline is an old, and at the time, we were using Policy Guide called 322. We no longer use that. The new public assistance program and Policy Guide are in question, number 55. And numbers referenced on this are not correct. When you submitted your RPA, you should have received an email back giving you the web address to be able to go on and use the new.
I have not received that back yet. I did get a response email after I sent a second request. Hey, did you receive this from Rebecca? She said, yes, I got it. But I haven't gotten a formal reply email that I've seen yet. Would-
It would just be for web address, so you can go on and look at the policy.
Would it be from Rebecca or not necessarily?
Not necessarily. It's either probably on the FEMA side that put it into the program when you become eligible.
Okay.
So it should be, if you don't get it, but you know, I'll-
I'll double check.
It's, it's, it's good reading. It's tough reading. But it's, these are the new policies that we're following. Most of it are the same as the old. So if you've ever been through one of these, it's not too far off. But there are some new things in there. Governor, Governor, you've been a local government partner, federal, state, local governments, private nonprofit for any drives. Your local government, FEMA has accepted your RPAs of your eligible applicant. Eligible cost must be reasonable and necessary to accomplish. The eligible work apply with federal, state, and local procurement and do not include or are reduced by interest, proceeds, salaries, favor, and other reasons. And that was also a must be the responsibility of the eligible applicant. Be located in designated disaster area and not to be under the specific authority of any other federal agency and be enacted use at the time of the disaster. Eligible work must be required as a result of declared rent. It must be retained in designated disaster area. It must be the legal responsibility of eligible applicant. Have y'all been through this recently?
No, sir, never. No, not. How many years has it been?
Since 1992, 93, we had the Ice Storm.
So you had, what, I was here in 97, we had one between 97 and now.
So-
It's been before, it hasn't lasted much longer than now.
Let's touch on these categories. You're not gonna, from what I understand, from the Africa's great, you're only gonna have degree and category C, Rose and Bridge. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, the other one, just gotta touch on. I'm not gonna get into real deep. Category A is debris removal. It's eliminating immediate threat to life, health, safety. It's eliminating rates of significant damage to improve private property and ensure the natural recovery effect of manatee. I'm gonna talk about B also, emergency protective measures. The reason I'm doing this, these two are emergency protective measures that have some limitations on them, which, what am I getting into there? Emergency protective measures, that's action stated by advocate before, during, and after a disaster to save lives, protect public property, public health and safety, and prevent damage to improve public and private property. Emergency protective services also include emergency communication, emergency access, emergency public transportation. And while we talk about, I have nothing else. A and B, emergency orders. Of course, we're talking about, if you have had emergency protective or category B, you would only receive money for overtime on your force account later. You don't receive regular time. Whether you're providing some sort of, in the past, on break, it's the same thing. But you didn't receive your regular time. They have a new power program right now. There's big water. And this is something I'll actually, I'll give it to you, you'll need to sign it if you're taking it or if you're not. This is the power program for debris removal and important, it's for the Sandy coverage act of 2013, Federal Emergency Management Services implementing alternative procedures for public assistance program of the power program. This, this has, has represented the, the, some received. This broken down into four things. You can take, one you can take off of, but one of you're not going to be able to, as a person. It's a one-time incentive for FEMA to set up a green management plan, and nobody else really has one. So okay, you could, and that's, would have been an extra kick exactly.
Okay.
Accelerated debris removal, increase federal cost share. This costs how you say? Your break, this, this meeting kicks off something. The break, if you started picking up your debris the day of, the day after, for the first 30 days, you get 30 to 85 percent share, fee share. 31 to 90 days, you get 80. From 80, I mean 91 to 100 days, you, it goes back to 75 percent. So it's an incentive that you get more money before you get picked up. And it just helps you in the long run for recovery. It also reverses the straight time force account later. If you use your people to do the debris removal, it pays in a straight time. It's a straight time if you have overtime to pay that. It always pays equipment time, no matter what it is, whatever you use, equipment time is pretty, materials, etc. The power is voluntary and subsequent. Sub recipient will supply with selected alternative procedures to alter the root and move some. Well, there's one, one terrible one I've got that's recycled. A lot of times when you pick up debris stuff, there's recyclable materials up there. Now, FEMA used to make you refund the salvage. Now they don't. You, you're able to keep that fund and use it for order, debris expense. We, we've got some, let's go ahead. Road and bridges. This is tiny, whatever the deal is in your county. Paying for federal, federal roads, that will prepare and place them, unless they're part of the federal, federal road system. But they're not yet, of course, we can't touch them. Can't, can't make a little better of this. Do y'all, most of y'all's gravel or do y'all have some chip and seal that maybe damaged or any asphalt roads?
I do. I have some roads where the edge, the front of it wasn't too bad, but the backside of it was washed. I had two feet washed away. So I do have some asphalt damage. And then I had some roads the asphalt was gone. It collapsed.
Well, take a look at all of them. John's gonna be glad to check with you. Your roads, your damage. Y'all have no water control facilities, so I won't go over there. Do you have any, or what, received damage?
Not to my knowledge.
Do you not have any, you have any, Oklahoma? Thank you. County Park, any damage out there?
Not that I know of. In our county park, of course, we've got that property leased. There was some flooding, and we had some pier damage and stuff like this, but we've already fixed that.
Was it damaged?
The pier was. The pier was, the pier was up in the parking lot.
Was it your responsibility?
Yes, it's a county park.
Then you will have some maintenance. That is recovered. So you all need to talk to John about that one.
Okay. So what would that involve? Repair of the pier?
How much it cost?
Yes. We fixed the pier and put it back up.
How much it cost?
It wasn't very large cost. It, it time and effort and-
Is it over $3,000?
No, sir.
It's not over $3,000?
So that's the reason I hadn't really brought it up. Let me show you something that, that's really, and it affects all of us. We, we've got, this is County Road 1070 here, and you can see the debris. What worries me, we're fixing to get a big rain this week, and I think we're gonna have tremendous flooding.
Remember what I encouraged you to do at that Africa briefing? You said you would get a contractor, and I said I would get a contractor on. I did it on my own.
Okay. But do we, what I would need to ask you, do we get them to check all our bridges that's got this kind of debris in there?
That's exactly right. If you have the bridge, your bridges are awesome. Have that kind of debris from this last storm, you bet. You'll get a contractor to take it out. You follow your procurement guys to do that. But that, you know, even if the contractor's taking it out, the percentages, if he gets it out quick enough, your percentage is gonna go up.
Yes.
Okay. That's why I encourage you-
Well, I've talked to the guy, and do we, can we just get one we know that can do it, or do we need to bid it out, or how?
You're gonna have to bid it, and you're gonna have to follow your procurement guys. You can't bid that out. The debris, you're really big. Take it out and sell it.
Well, I, I've took pictures. I don't have them all. I don't have all the pictures. But you can see what kind of debris we're, and I don't have the equipment to take all that stuff out.
That's why I encourage you to, to get that started back then.
Okay.
You know, 'cause it is important that you get it started. Just the sooner you get it going, the more you can make.
Okay.
More percentage of it. We're not writing that, debris taking right down.
Okay.
Okay, meet with you. I'll give you, I'll give John his name, and y'all call him. Talk to him. Okay? There. Equipment from the trailer rates. Eligible labor for temporary work. Labor rights can include actual wages paid, fringe benefits, pay at our credit to personnel for emergency work. So in other words, if you had category B or A work, we had temporary workers on it, they'd get to the regular time, which is usually just a, so you get both your regular and your temporary. This recovery policy, I really didn't go through it much, because it has changed. The revised policy that allows more than 16 hours to support and determine lethal, allows standard time in certain scenarios, and allows repositioning costs under PAA. As if you had SWOAT rescue or something like that, if you leave, you'd still be able to recover cost if you had requisitioned people for it. And we talk about the regular time. Any of those, or if you choose, found appropriately. That's, to me, that's no problem. You should choose the four, or about three items on there. Fringe benefits may include a percentage of actual wages paid for such things as vacation, holiday, insurance, unemployment, social security, or compensation. The fringe benefit rates for regular and overtime differ. Usually overtime doesn't have as much fringe benefit as your regular time, because regular time's that separate source of income on some of the things that overtime wouldn't do. We do pay fringe benefits to your benefit. You pay it, we'll repurchase it. Equipment rates typically include operation insurance, depreciation, payments, but do not include the operator time. FEMA's equipment rate, state rates, approved under split deadline, local rates. Rates developed by local government can be used in conjunction with people rates where by the lesser of the two rates approved. Equipment standard time, out of time, and not built-in. Speaking of equipment rates, we've gone to a new equipment rate schedule that just started with this disaster. So the equipment rate is for 2015, but it's typically for this disaster. John will give you that information. Materials, possible materials, many, got from purchases for the Africa, Africa stock, actual cost should be qualified for me to assess. Africa's historic data, contact and hear your benefit. If you do- If you do take any of your material out of stock, give you the last invoice that you bought something and put it in there. So that will come back. Now, the full labor for permanent. Labor rates can include actual wages paid, plus fringe benefits. Paying your credit, hard credit personnel for permanent work, both regular and overtime, or eligible for all employees. Permanent work refers to the activity that must be performed to restore damaged facility for minor repairs or complete replacement. The next thing we're going to is hazard mitigation.
Greetings, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mr. Burke. I'm with FEMA and I do the four, six mitigations. We support public assistance in that. What is mitigation is, it's whatever you can do to reduce the risk of something being bad and not being so bad. So that's what the word means. And when you're, when you have a facility, it can only be applied to your permanent work. And that would be like the category C, which is the roads, is what you say that you have. There's, the work is, they can only restore your facility to its pre-disaster condition, the way it was before the event happened. FEMA does have a provision that allows you to make improvements to the broken parts of that facility. An example of that would be if you had a, a pipe that got washed out, a culvert pipe, and it didn't have erosion protection on it, and that could have been the cause of it being washed out. But then you could put some rock, some filter fabric, rock and filter fabric, to protect that facility from future flood events that would, you know, keep it from washing out again in the future. And there's the funding limitations. You can do your mitigation or your measures that you want to add to the parts that you're repairing. Up to 15% of the cost of repairs. It can be pretty much anything that you want to design or, or apply to that. However, FEMA does have some measures that are considered cost-effective, up to 100% of the cost of repair. And putting riprap around pipes would be, would apply to that pipe at that 100%. So you just put your thinking cap on, because we do encourage mitigation. So that you won't have that damage again in the future, you want to reduce the risk by anyway. And it can be written right into your repair project. It's a non-competitive thing. But FEMA does have a full four mitigation, which is for unbroken parts of facilities or things you want. But that's one about the state and it's competitive. But the full six is non-competitive, it can be written directly into your project. And of course, we're, we'll be supporting the public systems. In the site business, we'd like to present with project specialists who'll be working with you ahead. And of course, if you come up with things, we encourage you to talk about it and see how it may apply to policy.
Do y'all have any, anything that you're, you're doing more than was there before in an attempt to prevent future damage? In other words, do you have anything that, that you're gonna be doing that would fall under this mitigation category?
We had rock and we've had concrete and stuff, and some of our concrete's gone. You know, I just have to go back and look at each project. We've got so many out there, all of us.
The, the problem is, we, we've improved, you know, like if a culvert washed out, we put one a little longer in there, you know what I mean? A little longer culvert. That's the only improvements that we've made. Put a bigger one sometimes, they were bigger. So water would just quicker because it washed, washed them out or washed out around them. We just had tons of them, but they're, they're small, and that's the problem with there. You know, we've got so many small ones, we still replace, we're doing one to say. Culvert from the, and it's been ongoing, actually. Oh, I've got the invoice, the big invoice for bought culverts. You know, where I had to buy a bunch of them, but I've used them.
The, the, the culverts pre-disaster, they were damaged, they were washed out, and they were damaged beyond.
Yeah, washed out around them.
You had an opportunity, you have to put back the new culverts.
Just around them, culvert itself. You can't just upsize it because you won't.
Okay.
In other words, if it had been washed out and lost and you can't reuse it, it's been crushed.
Yeah.
Or, or had a hole in it, yeah. But you still can, if it's cost-effective, you can still use geotextile fabrics and some rock. And there's measures that, that have been predetermined for that, and we can assist you with that when they're.
Okay.
Would upsizing that culvert be considered mitigation?
It is, if the, if the culvert was completely lost and, and the cause of it was, it was over top. The cause of the culvert was of insufficient size and carried the quantity of water that was caused from the event. It can be considered that.
Okay.
And remember that, and having.
If it's a blue line stream, or if it's a stream of water and it comes under jurisdiction of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, you have to do an H and H study. If it's on one of those streams, if it's just a culvert crossing the road and there's not a, a wet stream under it, then you're okay. You don't have to have an H.
Now, the only place you can tell us that suspect, what blue green is, what blue green is, we have nothing that can show us in the field what they are.
What, what is the H and H you're referring to?
It's a hydrology study, and it does an analysis on the upstream effects and the downstream effects on your water flow. It has to do with clean water.
They don't want it affecting someone downstream because you put in larger culvert.
The H and H studies can be very complex, or they can be simple just for the sizing of a pipe. But it depends on, on what your application is and what needs to be done.
If it's a simple one, it can be, if you have a, uh, flood, uh, person in the county, like sometimes, at times they have to write a letter, and that is the plan. Statement, there will be no downstream effect or cost by the time.
Do y'all have anything of this magnitude where you're potentially affecting that significant of a, of a water change where we would need a hydrology study?
Max probably need one of his. He went from two to one.
Is that on 2,500?
We'll have staff that can assist with those.
Oh, there's, of course, the culverts collapsed. And I came back and took one larger in there.
So you've already done the work?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, everything's gonna be relevant on what was there before and what you had to do.
We got it all, but, and all the concrete and everything else caved in.
PA can definitely look at the specifics to each project.
Well, it'll be specific, very specific, everything that's been done.
Y'all have any other mitigation issue questions here for Richard?
Well, we'll be around in, in the future of these projects and development to assist with those issues.
Okay, thank you.
This is, and this will be the same one, we talk about, that, that, our member.
I'm Mrs. R. M. History Preservation. As you may know, there's a shortage of different metal projects using federal funds. All of them, they, they're options. Need to be. Need to call it.
Pull that down if you need to.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
In particular, you've got category A debris. Was that vegetative debris mostly?
Anything besides tree limbs in the way of debris, anything besides, you know, plants?
We had, we had one place that the flooding was probably worse than I've ever seen. We had power lines down, we had big trees down, we had the road. The bridge was stopped up, stuff was flooding everywhere. And once we got in there and found out the tree, the power lines were down, we backed off. Till they tell us, you know. And I don't know, uh, would that be considered some type of environmental deal there? I don't know.
Where I'm heading is when you are removed, when you're collecting your debris, your vegetative debris or whatever kind of debris, it would need to go to either permitted landfill or if it, if you want to let it dry and mulch it and offer it to the community, that's, these are options too. So you can recycle, reuse, or otherwise it has to go to a permitted landfill. Did you have temporary storage of any debris? Like you kind of collected at one place and then brought it to a landfill or some other location?
The debris that we have, we don't, we hadn't even started cleaning out around the bridges and stuff because we were, I was trying to coordinate this to get one person to go to each precinct and look at what they've got and give us a quote on it. Uh, because we're, we're talking probably 20, 25 bridges that we're gonna have to look at countywide. Uh, and, and I thought I'd do that just one project, but we'd all do it at the same time. Because you're gonna, it's a pretty big job. The debris that, that we had there, this one big tree that wiped out the road and fences and the power lines, a man that lived on top of the hill, he said, "I'll cut it up. I need it for firework."
Perfect.
It was on the county right away, and I told him, I said, "We're not gonna be able to get this for a while." You get, he got it all, he cleaned it all up, so.
Your project specialist will work closely with you in formulating your story, how the material was managed, handled, disposed, reused, it's firework, and what have you. And that will all go into the PW, so that when we do the environmental review, we have a clear understanding of how the debris was managed. And that's what's gonna be important at the tail end when the, when the project worksheet is finished.
Let me ask you this, we, we're gonna have a lot of debris. It's all dead.
That's fine.
Trees, limbs, you can see what we had at the bridge.
Is it anything besides tree vegetation?
But this vegetation, what can we do with it? What are, we're gonna have to.
What you would do with it is exactly what you would do with it if FEMA was not here. How do you usually manage? I mean, you have other storms that are not.
Put it in a pile and I burn it.
Uh, you would need a permit for that. You just need to be sure that you're following federal, state, and local regulations if you do that. Okay. Uh, because we see your roads, I heard, you have any bridges that were damaged?
Bridges? I've got one, this one.
Pretty bad.
Some damage, yes.
What we advise is, especially for culverts and bridges, work closely with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers when you're getting your work done. Uh, as I mentioned, the H and H for culvert changes. Just coordinate with them, because the definition of navigable waterways is sort of interpretive by each, um, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers region. Some say it could be a drainage ditch, you know, dirt drainage ditch, but if it goes to a river, it impacts navigable waters, and they might want to know what's going on there. So the best thing to do is water work, culverts, bridges, contact the Army Corps of Engineers. And here is actually the green sheet, which we will give you copies of. And it has all the contact information for the different agencies, for TCEQ for your state historic office, for U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So contact information is in here, as well as general information about the FEMA EHP program and expectations. Uh, there are also a couple of forms in here. One is for the TCEQ, if you wind up having a temporary storage area for your debris or a burn area for your debris, that form needs to be sent. And I would recommend sending it as soon as possible, as soon as you know the location, because I don't want to remove that information. There's a similar form for the state historic reservation office. And it's the same, the same there. They, they just want to be sure that there won't be any subsurface impacts because of the debris management. So, um.
Is there permitting required for burning this material different from what we would normally do? In other words, i- if FEMA was not involved and we were just doing some general cleanup of bridges to prevent problems like this? I mean, we don't normally get a permit to burn there. But you're saying that under a FEMA relationship here, we need a permit to burn this material?
What you need is not, I can't tell you that you need a permit. You need to follow federal, state, and local laws. Whereas you might just go out to the back forty and burn something on any given day. If the state has a burn permit issue, I, I can't answer that question. That's why you would contact TCEQ and talk to them.
Okay.
Or, or a local or a county, you know.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a fire chief that we would always check on anything that's significant.
General speaking, sir. They require 142, 43, and they do, that's to protect FEMA. That's the reason we require a permanent permit. And the state will be, you just have to get the location, the GPS and some stuff like that. And it's not hard to process to get one, but you're gonna need.
This is the form that you will use for any, um.
Definitely.
Do you have those forms that we need to pick up? Okay. So let me say this. On this, the bridges and stuff, that's what we're gonna have. That's the type of debris we're gonna have.
Sure.
We'll have a central location that we will take this to each precinct. Uh, and at some point in time, we will burn it.
Okay.
What I, what I would do would call our, our chief that we're gonna do some burning. And, and they know about it, know what we're gonna do it, and we try to do it in a safe where it like may be springtime raining, or it may be wet rain the day before or something like this. And most of our bridges are in pretty good shape. I know Mr. Riddle has a bridge, but he has tremendous water damage and stuff. And, and that's, that's, we were looking at what bridges we have left, putting them on the off-road bridge system and stuff like this. We don't have many. We had 30 bridges done in the county since 95. And our bridges are in pretty good shape. What we're having is debris like that, that it's, it's impeding the natural flow of water.
Sure.
And it's causing flooding.
Of course.
And that's what's fixing to happen this week, I'm sure.
Absolutely. And again, we're not here to regulate you or tell you what you should or shouldn't do. We're just letting you know that any, we're gonna be looking at the debris and how you manage it. And because, you know, the fact that you mentioned you're bringing it to a certain location and you're going to burn it there, we would call that a temporary debris management site.
And TCEQs who we should notify as quickly as possible on those locations for your temporary storage?
Yes.
And that, that's simple to do, because you're not gonna be able to burn it immediately. You may have to, you may, we may be May before we've got it dry enough to burn. So let's get, let's notify TCEQ of the locations you're gonna use to gather all this stuff up.
Wait a minute, what, what, I've already burned a lot of debris, lots of debris.
Okay.
We've actually been working with TCEQ on that issue. I mean, you all aren't sitting on these messes and just waiting, you know, for permitting processes to go through. We understand that, you want to take care of it. At one point, the TCEQ was sending letters back to the applicants stating that, this was for actually the previous disaster, 4223, stating that because you didn't, they did not get pre-approval, you all didn't. The applicants did not get pre-approval, that they could not approve the debris areas. And so since then, FEMA has come to the table with them and said, "By stating that, you're making this project non-compliant. So can you, you know, give a little stretch here?" And they're working through that process. And I think the last I heard, and I haven't seen it in writing, was that the TCEQ was rewriting. And I think the last I heard, and I haven't seen it in writing, was that the TCEQ was rewriting their letters to address it so that if they could approve the site previously, if they had been pre-approved, that it's okay. It's considered compliant by them. And so therefore, we can go through and say that the project is compliant. So we had a little hiccup with that. Your project specialist will work with you on that and through me possibly. I'm here to assist project specialist. Our group is, our environmental group is EHP. And everything will go through him so that, you know, everybody's in the loop as far as communications. We just really support.
Notifying TCEQ, what format is used? Is there a specific form?
Yes, it's a form in here that I've been talking about. And you can fax it to them and they look at it, do the little research and sign off on it and send you a letter of approval or agreement, whatever.
Okay.
And there's also one for the ship bow in here, so there are two forms. State historic office as well. Any other questions?
No.
Is that in this?
No, no, sir.
The burning is a, this burning is a question to me. I mean, it's an ongoing thing. We've been doing it for, you know, always.
I understand, I understand that. I mean, that's usually the case. Again, since there's federal, there are federal dollars involved, we have to assure that federal, state, and local laws were followed. If nobody's here to see what you're doing, that's your business, basically. But FEMA's here, FEMA's here with FEMA dollars. And so therefore, we have to have the proof through documentation that you followed federal, state, and local laws.
Al, are you talking about previous and future ongoing projects where you simply gathered debris and burned it as opposed to a large effort related to this particular disaster cleanup?
Well, actually, this debris is not any more than when we have a real storm, a windstorm through, because it would blow several trees down and we're weeks picking them up and burning them, you know, clean them up.
Yeah, and I don't think she's talking about your ongoing day-to-day cleanup efforts that are related just to general responsibilities. She's talking about cleanup efforts related to this joint effort with FEMA. Puts a little bit, sheds a different light on it and it makes those requirements different. Is that, is that right?
Correct.
I'm going to separate my brush pile, huh?
Do you have some more?
We do, sir.
Like for each commissioner to have one and the judge.
We can, we can make copies of these if we, if we need. Jimmy, you need one?
I need one.
I'll hand that one to Jimmy.
Any other questions? And I'll be working, more ones in the office will be working closely with your project specialist and site visits and whatnot, so there'll be more time for more conversation. Thank you.
Go ahead and make a couple of copies. That way we can have one ready for Philip and then I'll put one with my, my stuff.
You can, if you have a contract to pick it up, you can have a certified land being lost on the property. You don't have to burn it.
Do you anticipate doing any of that or are you going to just take it to a nearby location for a future burn?
But you have to remember, we're going to be asking from cradle to grave. That's exactly what we, and it's up to you, not your contractor, to furnish it. You're the responsible part of it.
You have?
In terms of where the debris came from, we only need site, a site, a bridge, a bridge. We just say countywide, that's the debris.
But none of you have used a contractor yet for any debris removal? Yes, in other words, if you've removed any or burned any, you know where it came from and where it, where it went?
And you're going to need to quantify that. If you moved any of it, and you didn't know how much, where it came from, are you supposed to?
Well, I, other than, other than what's hung up in these bridges, you know, come out of these creeks, there wasn't a lot of tree damage, you know what I mean? There wasn't.
Well, I understand.
Yeah.
If you done, if you have enough of it, you'll do it all.
I haven't done any.
You'll do it all by yourself.
Yeah, okay.
They'll be able, especially a contractor, probably have a monitor or tells us how much he's picking up.
Right.
Don't get, you got to change, keep your guard down. You're not getting to change your guard before you do. Not, well.
For instance, it washed a lot of pavement off, just off the roads. But we, we've stored that, I mean, we'll use that for Phil and so forth as time goes on. We don't dispose of it, we don't want to dispose of it.
That's fine.
Okay.
Because that won't be part of your debris.
Okay.
Contract must be a reasonable cost to protect what you did. And this is a federal, state, and local procurement of the challenges. FEMA finds the method of procurement acceptable. Small purchase procedure, all of you have a small purchase. Seal bids, happy. Seal bids, proposals, non-competitive, and proposals. FEMA provides reimbursement for three types of contracts. Long sign, unit price, cost plus fixed fee. They do not want to exceed a cost plus. Because they're just, they're not reasonable. As I said, every of the small projects started 3,050, go to 121A. Large projects started 121A and go up. The front end, right?
Tom, let me ask this, do any of you anticipate having a large, any large projects that would exceed this dollar figure? I know you don't.
Some of the roads could be.
Roads and also Mr. Riddle's bridge, it could exceed that. It don't take much, 121,000.
The bridge is probably going to be a little further.
You're looking at 200, 300,000 dollars for a bridge.
Yeah, that's how I guess around.
And that's a cheap, that's a small bridge.
But.
Is that, is that, where's that bridge at?
1670 or used to be Northwest 40.
You say the bridge is damaged, Austin?
Not really, just the, the approach to it is broken off.
Not the bridge, just the bridge.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't know. I don't think there is, but I'm not sure.
We'll take a look. The bridge, that's worth a break on.
Will you have any large projects?
We have, we'll break into the next.
Largest project that I have will be at 2,500, but we've got, the debris cleanup's going to be probably the largest. I'm going to get Dennis and, and if each of the commissioners. I've got probably more bridges than all the rest of the precincts put together. I have a lot of bridges. I have a lot of older passes. But the older passes are fine, it's the bridges, the debris and stuff. And I'm just going to get a person, we're going to write up the spec, go out for bidding on it, and we'll do every precinct, y'all let me know where to go. And he'll go by and estimate what his cleanup, I'm fixing to do that now.
Well, does a multitude of cleanup projects constitute a large project?
Yes.
It does, okay. Various locations.
It's the PW side, not the locations.
PW, PW.
Project work.
Okay. Well, help me to understand the difference.
You might have 15 locations or 20 locations, 20 bridges, okay? You're picking up a bridge and you're going to write this on that one project work.
Okay, okay. So there, there could be projects all over the county that actually become one large project?
That's correct. That's why I'm saying watch out for roads, because they can, they can get in large projects very quick.
Yeah, I've, I've got roads that were damaged and basically destroyed. We've kind of put them back together over here, then this creek runs into this creek and this roads over here are destroyed. And you're sitting there trying to piece it back together till you can get, get something done to it because you can't do anything when it's.
Well, that's where I'm trying to educate us and understand, you know, what, when does a multiple projects become a large project?
When they go over 121A.
Well, but again, if I have 10 different, 10 different sites and 10 different contractors that are working on them, who makes the determination as to whether they are combined to be a large project or not?
It's what you got to do. You know, if you got working on roads, yeah, it probably still could be a large project. We, just because you've got different contractors doing it doesn't mean that we won't put it on one project work.
But that's where you can help us to determine what's large, what's, okay.
Well, like your.
Okay.
The larger. It's final accounting of actual cost. In other words, the state, if you do this every quarter, you may, we're writing today and you do quarter of the work. You send the money into the state, the hand, the press. All your voices, everything, they run through and say, "Okay, that's good." They'll pay you a hundred and forty, actual cost. And then you go another quarter, site time, season, and then final is the final cost per thing. They'll reconcile all your costs, whether that project work sheet, record, or something like that. They're going to pay you in quite a caution for that back. Okay, that's the one. Small project, we're writing on estimates, we're writing, you know, different things. And it's paid almost immediately out upfront, move, to get your money.
Well, are you going to address the, the timeframes that you will actually be here on site so that these guys know when they can sit down with you for clarification?
He will be making performance with these one.
Okay.
For site visits and one of these.
Is, is that in the next week, next month? What's?
A few days.
Okay.
It could start, it could start in the next few days.
Good, okay.
They'll decide which one, which one of those precincts. These are about precincts, okay? It's the way they're going to be broken down.
Good.
One, two, three, do you have four?
We do. We have four.
That's the way they're going to be broken down. You gentlemen need to decide which one you want him to come to first. He can't be running off.
Sure.
You know, do one, you get it, do one, and get it, do the next one, go right down the line.
Well, the problem we've been running into, we've got, we've got priority one, priority two, priority three. Now, I, I've checked probably 80% of the bridges, but I still have some bridges I hadn't even checked because we're trying to get this done. We're all in that same boat.
He's going to need to look at it. He's going to need to look at it.
That's right. Well, I've, I've got pictures of the ones we've done.
He's going to have to, not only pictures, he's going to have to physically look at it.
We're going to physically take him there and put it up.
Because we may need to break the rest here.
We can do that.
Yeah. If you've got damage to the bridge and it's the county's responsibility, we'll bring it down. If it's the state's responsibility.
I can tell you right now, to me, the most important thing right now is try to get this, the brick cleaned up because I can see major flooding. If it continues to rain and it rains this week like they're saying, and then it, you've got the rest of March, you've got April, and then May's supposed to be our wet month.
Yep.
We're going to have major flooding.
What part of the flood? You may have it anyway. You may get this way down or maybe it's more.
Don't, don't talk about.
Debris, debris.
I understand.
Kind of practice is stat order, debris.
I know.
If you have two different cases, like this time, the door gone and then it rains and you have a second, is it going to be called up or another separate project or are you going to fit it all on this?
No, we'll figure how much is there on the first. But we won't do both. Because that one, if, if, if there's another declaration, then we'll. But we just have, yes, I have 142, 43, 142, 45. We've got nothing in some places, in some of these counties that are black. But we got to figure out how to pay the correct amount on both. If you had something, so you can all have the brick picked up? And then come in?
Stat to render.
If you've got another, the declaration, you're going to be called again. From today, there's some decks that you need to know. From today, you have 60 days to tell us about all your damages. That means you give the shore to us, Brian. You take us out somewhere, but we know where that damage is. After 60 days, you say, "Oh, uh-oh, I forgot." I doubt Daniel will help you. But if it's something big and you slip your mind, that's. Usually, it is, you can fix it. Then, for emergency work, you're free, you've got six months to complete the work. Now, that doesn't mean that if you haven't got it picked up in six months, you're not going to get, I mean, we're going to cut you off. But it is going to mean if you're going on five months and you think you're not going to finish it, that goes to state, that's for extension.
That's how much time you have to complete the work?
Complete the work. That's, they need to, so that's how you can get contracts, they're going to have it done.
Yeah.
We're going to. With your roads, you have 18 months. And this is from this one, the 60 days from today to kick up. These are from the. February 21st. The day of.
Well, emergency work includes debris which starts the very first day of incident.
I'm not saying, I'm not going to figure it out. I'm saying how long.
Completion?
The, the day starts.
Declaration.
On the declaration, because that's when your 180 days are. You could have been thinking of it since the beginning.
18 months starts from the declaration date?
Six months and 18.
Okay, from the declaration date.
Declaration.
Tom, I disagree again, same question. Emergency work, because that 30 days.
I'm saying, I'm saying that, yes, the emergency work is paid for on the 21st. Not 100, not the day, the 100 day days. Well, there are 100 day days of work, too. It's, it's not six months, not six months. Except just days, like that, 30 days, like that. 30 months, 90 days in there, 90 months.
Right.
Not six months.
Right, I mean, a total of six months, the diet work, if they do the power program, starts December 21st.
The, the number of 30 days starts, correct?
That's from the date of the event. Talking about the emergency.
That's an incident. Not a declaration, that's an incident.
So we're talking, we're talking about a different timeframe on that emergency debris removal, I'll call it. That was from December the 27th. December 26th, where the 30. December twenty-sixth, where, where the thirty-ninety day window.
Right.
So we're coming up on that here in another couple of weeks.
That's why I was.
So debris removal, if we get on this and get it done by March the twenty, whatever ninety, ninety days is.
You get to eighty percent.
You get to eighty percent.
And if you pick up any, even if it took a few days, you should have hit the eighty-five percent.
Yeah. Well, you won't, we won't get, we won't get the eighty-five, we won't, yeah, we won't get the eighty-five, we could potentially get the eighty, otherwise, if we delay it, we'll be back at the normal seventy-five percent reimbursement. Everybody understand that?
We need, we need to put in the paper with debris cleanup for Potters County. We need to go ahead and run that and award it the, uh, uh.
This is what I'm.
Have to have special meeting.
Winter, winter, twenty-eighth.
Yeah, but that'll be too late.
Or, uh, Karen needs to sign this.
Public assistance alternative.
You're gonna wanna check the three, that's just at the top. And this is to give you, uh, eighty, eighty-five and, and percentage of pollution for twenty. Okay, you're gonna wanna check this because it's gonna give you the sliding scale, that's the eighty-five or eighty percent. Recycling, if you have any, go ahead and check it. You may not have, but it's not gonna hurt any of that. But if, if you do, you can use it. This one time, you're not gonna check because nobody has those yet. That's, uh, the debris management plan. This reversal of scrape time, I would check that in case you have to use any of your force count, like a pretty good debris operation. And you may wanna use it if not. That's what I, then we ask you to sign it in.
What is the alternative, why are they calling this an alternative procedures pilot program? That's just to take advantage of that sliding scale?
Uh, and also scrape down.
Okay.
Because you won't get paid scrape down if you don't accept this.
Okay, so we wanna, let's do this right now.
Yeah. It's, it's an over, really, it's, it's good.
Now, just like this project here, I have, we estimated how much material it took to fix it, how many loads of material, the hours, the men worked, what equipment they used, I've got all that down.
Good.
Okay? Now, we haven't put a topping on it yet, so I don't have the total of this.
That's okay.
We're trying to, we, we had to open this road.
So you had everything but the topping now?
Everything but the topping and we're gonna have to, you talked about rocks, concrete.
Who's gonna do the topping? Who's gonna do it?
We, either we or we'll have a contract.
Well, get a price on it, that's all you have to do.
Yeah, but I, I've got, there's, there's a lot of projects out there right now, I'm trying to put together.
But you gotta remember that he's gonna be running four precincts, trying to get prices.
Well, we've got all this put together, we need a topping on it, we need some type of either riff raft on this end.
Explain to him and he can bring the mitigation guy and everybody out there when they come in to look at it.
But, you know, I, I, you know, there's more projects out there than we can get to.
Well, I understand it. Believe me, I understand it.
Because we're having to stop what we're doing, and all of us have to stop what we're doing to go show and, and I understand, there's got to be accountability for this.
Who's the sub-recipient?
The Jersey, the county. It's kind of, and you can, um, get the, yeah, an hour, he may just want to ask.
But I would remind everybody, keep, I mean, hours you spend out there working, what equipment you using, put that down, the hours, the material, everything, because they're gonna ask for it.
Just be reasonable.
Little bit reasonable. Let me tell you, the last time we, we did this and we were audited, y'all ended up paying us more money because we underestimated the, the equipment.
Well, that's what I'm telling you, when, when they audit it, and it's a large project, you're gonna give it, you know, if, if we underestimate the, the P W, you're gonna get the extra money. That's what I'm telling you. So you're really, really, a large project.
Well, the debris will be a large project, but it'll be all the county.
Yeah.
And we just need to, and we're gonna work on that right now, we're gonna try to get that going and get it done.
That'd be good, that'd be good. Well, you know, we're gonna take, each one of you is part of the county too, so, it's just like the hangs out, we're gonna do all your, see, and we're gonna do all your team, and we're gonna do all your team.
Is it possible that a project could cross precinct lines to be a large project, or you, or they gonna still be within each precinct?
It can, but we're gonna, we're gonna.
We have a partnership road together and it's damaged.
Well, I understand that, but we need to split it. We want all the damages for precinct two to go to precinct two, all the damages for precinct one to go to precinct one.
So if you're, if you have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cleanup contract that spans all four counties, that doesn't make it a large project at a hundred and fifty if it was seventy-five, twenty-five, twenty-five, it's still, okay. So it can be a combination of different precinct, uh, costs.
It could be, but it's gonna be a combination of sites too.
Okay.
But it's not good to emble the precincts, is what I'm saying.
Well, it just makes it easier.
Makes it easier.
Precinct one to get their money and precinct two to get their money.
Another thing too, is they've got more damage than what I, they're, uh, this, yeah, this area had, and, and Philip has too, he's got, I had probably the least damage of, of any of the four precincts. Uh, I've done got most of them, I had debris cleaned up, I've got a few that I haven't been able to get to because it's far down to, to it, and I ain't got anything to reach it, so, but I've got most of them all man cleaned up and it's out in our, our yard out there, we've got, got it stored out there.
That's why, that way we can make it, to quantify, watch it, that's good. Just don't burn it before we get a look at it.
Okay.
I don't think this is gonna be the week to try to burn it.
Now, I, I get right, basically, Jim, and that's all of the kickoff, Jim.
Who, who besides John will be in the area physically?
John would be.
Okay.
And sometimes I'll be.
Okay, okay.
And I'll be talking to him probably each, every other week.
Yeah.
Somebody else.
William, did you have anything that you were gonna say that we?
Um, here to observe, Sam.
Okay.
I, I have a project, I have a large cupboard, tile in it, it's undermined, we've, we've temporarily fixed it, it washed down the fences on the lower side, uh, the whole thing needs replacing, it's, it's bad shape. But I've got other projects I'm trying to finish, we just opened the road last week, but this needs fixing. I don't know when I'll be able to get to that. Can I, I'll write that up, tell you what I'm gonna do, and we'll get to it when we can get to it.
Well, what John will get, and you'll sit down, and we'll figure out how much it's gonna take, and figure out the price.
Well, we can take you, show you the site, but we're not gonna have anything really, we just did temporary stuff.
You got a hundred and eighty, that, that is.
As soon as, I, I really don't wanna get in there till it dries up.
Ask for an extension.
Okay, well, I, I understand that extension, although, I'm just telling you, it's gonna take us a while before we get that, and then this gotta be dry because there's quick sand in there.
If I go past a hundred, ask, ask for that extension, twenty-nine, four. I'll let that go to, uh, Amy, I think it's up to her. How long, thirty-six months?
Uh-huh, total, it's an additional eighteen.
And again, the, the six months and the eighteen months begins today, is that right, Amy, or it began back in December?
No.
Sorry, it's right.
February ninth.
It began on the date of declaration.
February ninth.
Okay, so we're a month into it. So you've got five months to complete debris removal without an extension, you've got seventeen months from now to complete, uh, your permanent work.
Okay, let's address that, and I wanted to, uh, remind you of the consequences for the pilot program, I do think that it is significantly beneficial for applicants, that after that six month total that begins on twelve twenty-six, two thousand fifteen, if you go over that six months, there is no extension, that isn't for the reimbursements.
Okay, you've got me mixed up, you're referring back, once again, to a December date.
Debris.
Okay, I thought you said December just then.
I did, for debris, the, the period, the first thirty days that's reimbursed at eighty-five percent is December twenty-six, two thousand fifteen, through January twenty-five, two thousand sixteen. The second period reimbursed at eighty percent is twenty twenty-six, two thousand sixteen, through three twenty-six, two thousand sixteen. Okay?
Yeah.
Then the last period, I haven't counted that far on my calendar, I was, I was literally counting days.
Let, let me ask you this, can y'all put a timeline together to help us?
Sure.
So if we know we're behind on something, or we need to get this done by a certain date, but I think it would be good for each of the commissioners and the judges to have a timeline that we can do this, this, or we got this time to get it done.
I will absolutely do that for you. I just wanted, I mean, the, the judge just signed the pilot program, and that's fine, I do agree that it's advantageous, but that last ninety days, which puts us at, like Jan, all of debris needs to be completed, there is no extension for the pilot work, the reimbursements will be completed.
And that's ninety days up to how long, six, six months?
That's the six months total, that's the last ninety days, because the.
Okay, zero to thirty, thirty to ninety, ninety to one eighty.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
On debris removal, so, is it realistic that you're gonna get, uh, and those, those dates or those timeframes are not extendable? We literally have until March twenty-sixth, uh, give or take a few days, is it ninety days or is it three months, I would think?
Uh, March, it will be, uh, to get to eighty percent, you've got to have like March twenty-sixth, isn't it, Rick?
Correct.
Okay.
And for that, it's still getting seventy-five percent.
So you've got just shy of three weeks to get your debris removal, and it's actually finished, finished, the work done, not just, well, we've entered into a contract to get it done.
Correct, it's done, it's over, it's done, it's worked.
I, I disagree.
Tell me what you think, Amy, because anything that's in our favor, I wanna hear.
They, they can have work performed up until the twenty-sixth, it's gonna be eighty percent.
Yeah.
Anything after the twenty-sixth is, is seventy-five percent.
But it's based on when it's actually completed.
At least, at least, it's actually seventy-eight percent.
Yeah, worth it, it's done.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be a hundred percent.
So if we hustle starting right now and really get a, a cleanup guy in gear, it'll be the difference between eighty percent reimbursement and seventy-five, if we can get it done by this, by March the twenty-sixth.
Well, I tell you right now, I can't see, we hadn't even bid it out, I can't see.
I, I understand, it may not be realistic, but.
It'll take two weeks to put it in the paper.
Hmm, maybe not.
And I've already got the, I mean, I've already done.
You're, you're eligible for the better reimbursement.
Years, oh, and, uh, eight, I, depending on when to give it.
If you got it done by January twenty-sixth.
Mine was done, most of it, there might, I'll have to look back, but most of it was done, but it took weeks after the incident.
No, that's good, you get a, that good reimbursement. Okay, questions, this, here's your opportunity. John, will you be here today, or when, when should they get with you immediately after this and start scheduling?
Well, it looks like tomorrow we're gonna have a, a lot of rain, and, and today, we're, we're working, all of us, I know all of us are working full go today, we've already got our hands down.
Well, let's don't let John get away from this meeting without the three of you scheduling, uh, whether it's this week or end of the week, or?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Rainey, Mark, you know, all stuff, why don't you make it for, for all your road?
Yes.
You know, maybe if you, if you have a lot of stuff, if you've got time, maybe it's, maybe start forming up projects instead of, you know, your sites and the roads.
Uh, yeah, we'll get together afterwards and y'all set up what time y'all want to meet, but.
What, what are our priorities? Have y'all discussed that amongst yourselves? I know every one of you probably thinks this is most important, but.
The three roads that I had, we've got them back open and, and they're, can get across, and, and they were all three major to get it done. Uh, the debris to me is what's worrying me is because we're getting a lot of rain this week, and I think we're gonna have a lot of flooding this week.
I'm gonna call the, the guy when I get back, just out of Dallas, and get him to give y'all the call, give a call, or you had enough of the debris back there?
I'm sorry, didn't.
Anybody else want to talk to?
Debris removal contract, contact.
The, the, the guy, the guy that's doing category, they're running out of Austin, I'm gonna have him call you now.
Okay, okay.
And you talk to him, you tell him that.
Well, that's it's.
And if he has to, he can get somebody up there.
Okay. I would like to get that done as quickly as possible. Do, it, let me ask you this, do we, and maybe I'm not understanding you right here, on the debris, we, we normally put it in the paper and, and ask what, you know, basically say, we would like for you to bid on these projects, we still don't know how many bridges we got. I've still got a couple more bridges to check to see if there's, uh, but we do have a lot of pictures, and we have the debris, and you saw what we had a while ago. Now, this guy that calls us about the debris, or do we, we still go out for a bid, right? Or does he have, do y'all have some companies that's on the list that we can pick from?
No, we don't have lists.
But we're gonna have to go through the process and bid it out.
That's up to y'all. We don't care if you do it, we don't care if you do it.
Okay.
And they still have to be cleared on that website to be sure that that contractor's not have any negatives against them?
Yes.
What's that, what was that website called? I've, I've forgot, I've got it writ.
Sam.
Sam, sam.gov, okay. In order for somebody to bid on these projects, do they look at the project and give you a bid, or are they gonna bid on an hourly rate, or what?
Take, uh, I don't mind telling you, I was gonna look at, was Ben's cameras, because he's got the equipment to reach over in there and pick it up, I don't know if anybody else has got that big of equipment to get it, get it done.
Oh, God, yeah, the guy Hugh that did twenty-three, forty-eight, out here Naples, he's got it, he, he has it, he's got big equipment. Can't think of another one right now that's got.
That's what you're having, guys, that's what I'm, that's what you're having.
I don't mind being competitive, again, we're looking at time here, if we can get them all together and they can come out there and, and go to each project, because you're, I'm gonna say it's gonna be between fifteen, twenty bridges got debris hung up.
You think so?
I, yeah.
Just your precinct or all precincts?
That would be all the precinct, I probably got fifteen bridges myself, or more.
I'm gonna count mine today, but all of them don't have, I've got some just like that, matter of fact, that's out there, three of me and Hugh. I've got some like.
Is there anyone else that we need to hear from before we break?
Hi.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
So we count three, we count six, so I guess the next one.
Okay.
Did everyone just fill out and sign the sheet that you made the thousand around?
Don't think so, don't, I don't think we've seen it. Okay. John, we'll meet with you all after this meeting. Let's go ahead and, if there's nothing else. No, we, I'll tell you what, we need to, we need to finish up one more thing talking about county cleanup, but this should just take us a few minutes. What, Christie?
Yes, my question is, does the grant, is that...
Yes, yeah, two and, two and three. Okay, if there's nothing else right now for, regarding to our kickoff meeting, after we finish with items two and three, let's be sure that you get together with John to schedule some appointment sites. All right, I'm gonna go back to item number two, considering possibly take action on Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Solid Waste Grant in the amount of $3,000. I would certainly ask that you authorize the county to take advantage of this $3,000 that the COG is going to be coordinating on behalf of TCEQ. And I've already confirmed that if we do a county-wide cleanup project, and I'm not talking about anything having to do with flood damage, I'm talking about simply the trash pickup that we typically do on an annual basis. So this is something that's not been offered previously, but we certainly want to do that. So I just need, I just need a motion to, to approve taking advantage of the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Solid Waste Grant in the amount of $3,000. Motion by Commissioner Fields. Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item number three, considering possibly approve a county-wide cleanup effort. At the time I found out about this grant that was available, I contacted the city to find out when they were going to be doing their cleanup effort. It just so happened they were gonna be starting it next Monday. That'll be the 14th through the 19th, I believe. Now, they've already issued a press release lumping us in there. Now, we could choose to delay this, we can go ahead and participate with them. I don't know how much benefit there is necessarily in doing this at the same time, other than public awareness. But the sites that the, that the city has posted for us, I believe, are the same as we have used previously. Precinct one, County Road 1670 on the west side of 271, south of the coal mine. Precinct two at the Tri-Lakes Volunteer Fire Department. And precinct two, Barn on 3417 and at Winfield near the post office. Precinct three, Sugar Hill Community Center, Argo Community Center and the old barn at Talco, 71 East. And then at precinct four, the Cookville Walking Track off of FM 1,000 and the east side of FM 1,000 and Highway 49. So what would you like to do? I participate in this next week and get dumpsters delivered to those locations? Or delay? Kinda tell me what you wanna do.
I know last year, we had a, a deal with the, the city doing theirs. They, they told me that they were having trouble getting the dumpsters and all of that. We were late getting them out from what they said and, and they said that they were gonna have to, we're having trouble getting the dumpsters all out because of that. So I don't know if we need to...
Getting them out, you mean delivered to the actual sites?
Yes.
Wonder, wonder why?
Well, they, they said that, that we changed, they actually changed it last year too. To the next week, what they, what they, really, it, they, I think we changed it the next week to try to alleviate some of that. But we were late getting the dumpsters there, people were already bringing stuff, calling me and, and, you know, trying to find out where they were at, we knew it was gonna be there, you know, but the date that, that we'd been given wasn't the date that, that we ended up getting, actually getting. Later in that day or, or into the next day when we finally ended up getting them. So, uh...
Well, we've got a, we've got a week from today before these would... Now, these, were these out for a full five days or a week or what?
It was out for six days. Went through one week. My understanding, they said they could have them out Monday. They would be out and go through that next Sunday. And they'd pick them up, start picking them up that next Sunday.
That's not the date, they just given their Michael in the press release that they yield there. They just given, out by noon on 14, uh, they'd be picked up by noon on the, uh, or not, they'd be put out on 14 and would be picked up by noon on the 21st.
So full, full seven days?
Full week. Yeah. So, uh, I just need to see if I can get one more put up there, that, that 49 and 1,000 location. Instead of just...
Instead of one dumpster, you wanted to put two?
I need two there.
You just call and tell them you want two instead of one?
Okay. Cause I, I, that kept us, I mean, we, we would go by there three times a day, every day, the whole week, packing that stuff down. And then I was calling them about every other day to pick it up and dump it because of, uh, that we were paying so much that we brought there.
Well, since we're approving it here today a week in advance, do you wanna stick with this timeframe? If so, let's get a motion to approve this and then each of you can call and make your, make your arrangements.
I will be, I, I can call them and tell them, have them call the commissioners. Or you want the commissioners to call?
Let's just let the individual commissioners call and then, what about on behalf of Phillip? Do those locations look good for him?
I can check with his hands. I'm sure he, he did, I'm sure his places would be the same as last year.
Okay. If you'll let them know.
Okay, I will.
Would you like to say a word at this time? Got a representative from Sanitation Solutions. Will you come on up to the mic and tell us? We may be too late to consider this option this year, but make us aware of what your capabilities are for the future?
Good morning. My name's Mark Williams, I'm manager of the Sanitation Solutions. I'm very familiar with this project, I think all the vendors know it. Worked this project when I was with one company for many years, worked with Phillip. Mike and Phillip and I worked real good together on this. I know all the ins and outs of this cleanup. Unfortunately, next week I couldn't do this. I believe we could save y'all some money. I, you know, I know we would save you some money, we could look at it and see. If you had time to, you know, didn't have to go with next week. I think we could save you quite a bit of money going along with the cleanup project. We would, uh, have your cans delivered Monday morning. In the past, when I worked for another company, I usually personally come in at 6:00 on Sunday night and deliver all your cans. They don't have nobody here that's as dedicated as I was to the county. But I'm more so because I know all the county and I actually live in this county and I live right on outside of it. Everything I do is done in this county.
When you pick up the dumpsters, are they going, are you taking them all the way back to Paris to dump them?
We have a transfer station in Pittsburgh. Some of them will go to the Pittsburgh transfer station. If it's later than evening, that truck probably would go back. We have two trucks that are out of Pittsburgh, the transfer station that run this area. We will be adding a third truck for this one. That one truck pretty much will be your dedicated truck, he'll haul probably to Pittsburgh dump there. Uh, if we can get in a bind, we can always go to a local landfill, that's not a problem if you go there also. We will, uh, have that one truck, we'll have the other two that stay right here in our present Pittsburgh area to come and help out when needed. What we will do is, we will set your cans at each location and it's commissioners call and say, we've got a can ready or Mike, Michelle, I have, whenever I went, was here before, I would look at the can and if I saw something that was bad, I'd call Phillip, say, hey Phillip, I'm gonna look at this. Phillip was pretty much my point of contact for everything and he would get with the other commissioners and say, hey Mark, call, thanks for my having a problem. On Saturdays, pretty much it was left, the past, they left it up to me. If I saw something that was bad and had to be hauled and couldn't get it to the commissioner, we would haul it return. But I took pictures of everything and made sure everything was full and ready to go. So we had the fact that we weren't just out there doing this just to make an extra dollar. We will look forward to being able to work with the county on it. Would love to have the opportunity to do it. Unfortunately, next week we can't do it. If you could give us a little time and get it, I assure you, we can do you the job and say, thanks.
Well, like I said, with the press release having already been done by the city, I'm afraid we're somewhat limited at this time. At least you've made me aware of this opportunity. I haven't thought about it since David Crooks had serviced us, you know, years ago on a couple of, at least one of these.
Yes, sir.
How do you all promote this? Do you rely just upon the newspaper? Do you all use signage at your precincts? I, I don't know what you've done in the past.
Been doing it in the past, it's, I'm trying to find out the city. We've always tried to coordinate this and this is what we've done in the past, to do it at the same time. Because if you separate it, what you run into is you got people from the county bringing stuff up there that's the city and then the city, county does there a different week. It, it works much, much better when you got both parties doing it at the same time.
Do your county residents have to utilize your drop station? They can't go out to the landfill like somebody with a water bill?
That's right.
Okay. Okay. Mark, thank you very much. Appreciate your taking the time to come down here. Okay. What would you like to do?
Make a motion that we, uh, go ahead and get the, the cans put out and coincide with the city of Mount Pleasant.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Fields to take advantage of next week, the beginning on the 14th, Monday through the 21st of the following week. Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Anybody have a closing comment? I, I do not. Commissioner Fields?
Uh, only thing, I appreciate all y'all being here. I know and it's, it's, uh, helped us get this thing done. I know it's got to be done right. It has to be verified, everything that y'all are talking about. But also, you gotta realize, we've got a lot of stuff to do. Every one of these commissioners up here has got major projects. It's major us, it might not be major somebody else. But my biggest concern right now is flooding. And I think we're gonna get it again if we get the rain they say they're gonna get. We're gonna have roads flood and wash out. And a lot of the problem is gonna be caused these debris fields that we have out there. Water can't flow naturally, it's gonna back up and it's gonna flood. But hopefully, uh, you know, hopefully it's not letting it just like we got the, the day after Christmas. It's just more rain and we can stay in there.
Well, if you will let me know how you wanna go about the bidding process and getting somebody to bid on this, if we need something in next Monday's agenda, I need to know about it by, by Wednesday.
Okay.
And we can always have a special meeting to approve bids, but the sooner we can get on this cleanup work, the better, for multiple reasons.
You did the, in the paper today?
Yeah, you go, we're gonna do it, so just go ahead and put it in there.
Well, what, I, I need to know what they're bidding on.
Okay, well, the, the cleanup debris on, on our bridges...
And they'll have to see you for specific details?
Commissioner to go look at the spot and see what they're bidding on.
Gotta have the, so many foot deep backhoe. Get that from Dennis' camera.
I'll try to, I'll try to get with somebody and maybe they can give me some ideals how to write the specs up and what type of equipment you're gonna have to have. Because there are some that's way down there.
Do you, will these bids be done on a county-wide basis or you want them done precinct by precinct?
Countywide.
Yeah, I, I think it's probably, 'cause this is gonna be a project. We could say this is gonna be in this precinct, this is gonna be in that precinct. What would you charge to clean this debris field up?
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Well, we're in multiple locations that we will do, take, show them the places.
Okay.
I'll have mine ready today, I'll get it ready today.
Okay. Anything else? Comments? Commissioner? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure, move.
Motion by Commissioner Fields. Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you again, everyone. We appreciate you being here very much.